You're conflating.
I'm not conflating. That wasn't good. I was like, I'm missing something I was calling on. Something we could work on. Better than what I think. I just feel like, when you hit this one, it's kind of like that. Just like.
Hi, nice to meet you. I'm right in the direction. This is just for my day.
Yeah. Okay. Terry. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, I guess, but I'll get you on the.
Five thirty, we call a special city council meeting on May twenty-third. Order. Do have a forum. City council action items, call for public hearing, refinance bonds, CHI, June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, seven thirty, council chambers. All right?
So, several years ago, the city of Little Falls was, had to provide most approval of the CHI, capital health conditions. They did some construction projects over many hospitals that they owned throughout the area and they sold tax exempt bonds. Each community that they do work in, they have to approve that CHI issued these bonds and we have to give our approval for that in the federal law. And then they have one entity actually issue the bonds, you know, for them. And so, they had another city actually go through the process, the issuance process, and we just have to provide most approval. So, they are now going to refinance those bonds, so we need to call for a public hearing on June, again, to provide approval for them to issue these bonds under federal regulations. So, we would ask that we call for that public hearing. There's no cost to the city to do this, or even the city that's issuing the bonds, there's no cost to them to do it, it's just basically giving the approval. They'll reimburse us for any expenses we incur such as advertising.
So, we should come up with.
I'll call for that.
All right, motion, we're done there. Second wave of mouth though. Discussion?
How long ago was that?
You know, I don't remember exactly how long ago. I'm gonna say it was in the last five, seven years or so.
So, this is for the hospital, this ain't for Lutheran?
Correct.
Because we just did that for Lutheran during two years.
Lutheran was a year or two ago, yeah, but no, this is for CHI when they did their expansion.
It's been about six years.
Any other discussion? Harry, none, all in favor? Six, five, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, saying same? Motion carries. Established pay equity points. Points per points. John?
Yeah. The, okay, so this is starting, starting back in two thousand fifteen, at the request of one bargaining units for the city, they asked us to do a comprehensive pay equity study for city of Little Falls employees. Pay equity is a Minnesota law passed nineteen eighty-four, essentially assigns point values to positions based on relative work, so that they can draw comparisons for, you know, public works, street employee to police employee, to finance directors, administrator, secretary of wastewater, so that we have a wide variety of positions within cities, but they wanted to have a fairness primarily driven by gender basis between positions. So, they didn't want female dominated classes to be consistently underpaid relative to what the points system that they added to it. So, they created this in nineteen eighty-four. Every three years, cities need to do a pay equity compliance study. This last year, we actually just had it, first one fifteen into twenty sixteen, and we're in compliance right now. That's a fortunate thing. In the past years, we haven't been in compliance, but what happens is because we have four bargaining units in the city and we have four different pay schedules amongst each of the bargaining units, there are different ways that people progress through those scales. In time, those, you know, we could easily be out of compliance by the next three years cycle, and you're supposed to say we're in compliance during the period, but reviews aren't that stringent unless you're in your three-year window for a report. So, what we did was consulted with Springstead Incorporated to do the point study. They interviewed or did PHUs, performance or position evaluations for every position in the city, did interviews, I think, with the department heads. A lot of this took place here in my time, so I'm looking for confirmation, but went back, analyzed all that information, all the positions, all the descriptions, analyzed the evaluations that the employees made and the department heads made, and assigned recommendations for points to those positions. So, on the, what, on what was sent out to you, you'll see the positions were listed in that third page of the, of the pay equity points salary survey comparison. So, in there, there's a couple of, you know, there's certainly changes for all because we're now moving from a points range from one hundred and fifty points to four hundred eighty, that was one hundred and fifty points, four hundred and eighty points, now it's going to be one hundred points to seventy. And within this, they're recommending the pay schedule with grades, and currently we're in a grading system of ten grades, this one will move to twenty grades, with the top position currently being a grading position. Another recommendation for changes are a couple of job titles. We currently have, currently had part maintenance worker one and twos, eliminating that to just a single part maintenance worker. The job descriptions are very similar, and with the retirement checklist, we were able to consolidate that. And then moving the assistant engineer position to an engineering technician position. Those are, and then administrative assistant would be moved to city for a job title, were their recommendations. So, within that, there's a lot of movement of points and assignment of grades to a future pay schedule. Today, we're primarily focused, or we're only focusing on the approval of the points. The grade in the pay schedule, we can talk about at a later time, but right now, we just wanna worry about the points. So, within the research that Springstead did and analyzed, that they performed in the pay schedule that they would assign to this, or recommended it to be assigned to it, I wanted to ensure that that could fit within kind of the market for this position, or for our, for cities of comparable size and outside of the metro area. So, recently, the lead Minnesota just, the city's just completed its annual salary survey and released that data. So, in there, they have a lot of good comparable positions throughout many cities, so that's the first couple pages of what you see. So, I compiled from those, those salary data, removed out anything that was from two thousand, earlier than two thousand sixteen, so this is only current reported positions. Tried to find comparable cities, so populations between seven thousand and fifteen thousand, just because the range for ten thousand, above ten thousand, went from ten thousand to fifteen thousand, so we couldn't really cut it off at twelve or thirteen, or you know, just to try to nitpick a little bit which cities we wanted. So, I feel that's a good range. It also, for the first time, they've started including a lot more county positions in the salary survey, so there are some comparable south, county positions, some city positions, especially with law enforcement and engineering. Those seem to be the two best, and within equipment operators, heavy equipment operator being, I mean, another fun fact of the salary survey is they eliminated the heavy equipment operator position out of there, but it is listed in other positions like that, and we'll do some searching for those comparable ones for us. So, that's why, so what you'll see on the first page is a couple highlighted areas, golf course superintendent and assistant golf course superintendent, and the water distribution engineering technician, none of those positions were listed in other cities, so we don't have any comparable salaries for that, which is fun. And then with the one in gold or yellow, assistant water superintendent, it was a tough comparison to find, only really found four cities with four positions that really kind of met the same criteria that we have for that position. A lot of them just are straight water superintendents or water and wastewater superintendents, you know, not, not something that's just in this, been little, you know, minor supervisory role, but mainly you're the water treatment operator as we classify that position. So, in there, trying to find that comparable was, was a little bit difficult, so in the end, I didn't include that in, in the grade comparison on page two, just because I felt with four cities and four positions, it kind of skewed the numbers a little bit more than what we're looking to see, and finding that was not measuring its true statistical significance, I didn't feel it really added to the, of what we're trying to see in that comparison. So, in the second page of the spreadsheet, what we'll see is the breakdown of the market averages for the minimums and maximums, and then if what, if the recommended pay schedule that Springstead put together were approved, where are minimum and maximums for those grades and ranges would fit within what the market says. So, the, an important thing that I, I wanna point out in this is that we're not trying to match up the minimums and maximums, we just wanna be within a guided range, and I, and I feel a ten percent below or above in that range is, is reasonable, but what I really wanted to see was where is the average for those positions? How does that fall in the order of going up, you know, up the basic pay grades? So, going from grade one to two to three to four, as we went up those, are we actually seeing those averages increase at a pretty linear rate, you know, so you're going up a reasonable percentage with every one of those grades? And honestly, that's what happens. You'll see on that second one, grade one, the average is thirty-eight thousand, grade three is forty-four, grade four is forty-six, grade five is forty-eight, you know, they're climbing that scale as you'd like to see it. So, what that tells me is that the, the work that Springstead did in assigning those points to those positions really matches what the marketplace is going to bear in terms of salaries for, for those positions if we put them into a pay schedule. So, that's, that's an encouraging, encouraging thing to see.
Question, John, why is there such a difference between the six and seven? There isn't really that substantial difference between the other ones?
So, then if you go, the, the challenge is to kind of compare back, looking back, there's some limitations in the amounts of kind of comparables we have. So, grade six position, the only one that we, that fits that for our city, what we're proposing for a grade, is in the water, wastewater, water treatment maintenance worker two. So, this is your water, wastewater operators?
No, it's just the maintenance worker.
Just the maintenance worker?
Yeah, not the operator, it's the maintenance worker.
Okay.
So, it's basically one position that you're looking at that fits into that pay grade, so we don't have a large comparison.
Or, or you don't have two positions to compare with one another, like, well, I guess seven's a bad comparison because that's only the patrol officer, but five's a good comparison because it's wastewater operator, utility building clerk, office assistant, accounting clerk, heavy equipment operators, they're all in that pay grade, five, water operator, wastewater, lab technician, operator. So, those, those, I actually averaged all of those positions together to, you know, build this, to show where to compare in the market. And, and it's a good example of why the pay equity system kind of helps to work, is that those are very, those positions vary quite a bit in the, in the work functions that they do, but when you assign them points, and the points as were presented by Springstead, they, they're well defended and well researched to say that they can build these comparables in these points and assign them to those positions and that they're defendable, that those positions are really graded out equally. So, they should, in terms of pay, be graded out equally in terms of pay as well.
John, I think I asked you this question before. How does this affect union negotiations as far as you negotiate two percent, three percent? So, how does that fall into line?
Yeah, so, so likely what I would, what would likely happen, and this is the way the county operates, is the county does have one single pay scheduling for all pay employees, regardless of what department they, they work in. So, that pay schedule is what it is, and it's going to determine how people are gonna progress in their years of service in terms of pay, and then if they were to change positions, they would climb in grades. However, then each year, they, and they have unions as well, they negotiate what the cost of living increase would be added to that pay schedule. So, so that would be a negotiative piece, that would be that the unions could negotiate as well as, you know, anything else within, you know, the end of the realm of that field of unions. But, in the end, it would take away the ability to negotiate their own pay schedules, and everybody would be assigned to this one pay schedule. So, the, the key points afterwards are going to be, what are the other considerations that we wanna have with this? Do we wanna kind of follow what Springstead's recommendations are? There is, you know, all these other things can be kind of up for discussion, and we can change at this time, but once it's in place, you kind of wanna, you want to leave it in place because as you, if you want, if you're fiddling with it, tweaking it, you're always gonna bring in that risk that the pay equity compliance is gonna fall off. So, currently, if this were to be implemented, and it were to be implemented at, at the Springstead recommendation for the salary schedule, it would be okay.
Would that make negotiations easier for you?
In a way, yeah, I think so. Not having been through any of them since my time, you know, it's, it'd be hard to say easier from what? Because they don't have a baseline for those negotiations, but I would certainly think, in, in discussions with others that I've had, they, they agree that if you do have a single pay schedule, it's easier to manage that.
Even with the, of the union?
And in the end, we still wanna talk to the unions and get their input too. Granted, we'd wanna have what cities want to move forward, what in place prior to, you know, any negotiation, because you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bend the contract even the step in grade percentage increases, and I think that's more important than council than that for a question.
Well, and I don't, you know, I've cut a lot of experience in this, a lot of different facets, but looking at this, you know, you don't know where to start to say, okay, this looks like it's a little off, and so that's why we hire somebody like Springstead for their expertise, and then have staff look it over and say, okay, this fits, I think this is gonna work, you know. I'm looking for guidance from our leaders more than me saying, well, this one looks like it could be a little far off, you know. Like you said, you change one and we're the control.
And where I would go with, with this pay schedule and starting what the amounts would be, is start singly with the base, the first grade, first step position, setting that salary, and then from there, set what the percentage increase is going to be between your steps and then between your grades. So, moving across in your steps in the, in the columns, and then your grades moving down. And what Springstead started with was, with recommendations were three percent increase between steps and six percent increase between grades. So, when you, and that's what, and that's what I brought back into the comparison for the minimum, maximum in those grade positions, and how they fit within the market right now. So, this, and then the step schedule is a seventh step schedule, so the max, you reach the max by seven steps.
Do we have any other communities that have done similar to things like this that you know of, so we can say, well, how's it working?
I don't have the, I don't have a direct comparison. I, I know in my previous community, we had step schedules, but what ultimately they started doing were just moving one, like saying, okay, the position between step, grade H and step five and six is going to change five percent. And what ends up happening is that nobody ever meets that, it's just catered into one position, so you kind of just made your step schedule useless because you just pick and choose which one's gonna change. Once it's in place, you don't really mess with the in-between steps and between the grades, you just pick what the baseline number is gonna be, and that's what your cost of living is concerned.
And I think it's, you know, for the council, each union has something similar to this. It isn't like this is foreign to all the unions and stuff. We, we all have, you know, whether it's, you know, flat dollar amounts, hourly amounts, you know, annual amounts, whatever, they, there is some type of a pay schedule in each union contract. So, the goal here would be to get them all under one umbrella, under one pay scale. There's a lot of communities that have that type of thing, where they just work off one pay scale and not have, you know, four different ones. And, and part of, you know, we have been all the compliance with pay equity over, you know, a couple of times the last six, eight years, whatever it's been. And part of that is because of the union negotiations and differences and how the contracts were, and who's, or how what the contracts say as far as length of service to get, you know, from the number of steps that are in our pay grades, you know, insurance can be a factor, is, if insurance, the, the city's contribution is different between unions, then that plays a huge role, that gets reported, and so there's a lot of variables that can throw this off. So, having everybody under one umbrella should make that a lot easier and make us more conscious of living than we have.
So, in this present form, if we accepted what we have in front of it, in front of us, does this have any, what if any effect does that have as far as our budget going forward?
Yeah, moving forward, then Springstead offered a few different options for what, how to implement the pay moving forward, you know. Some would be, everybody stays flat until they, if they're, if they're above what they would be assigned to on the pay schedule, they would stay flat until they met that point and afterwards they would start getting the pay schedule increases. Some would be move them up to the next equivalent spot on the pay schedule if they're below, so some you're catching up really fast, and others would just be moving people to the midpoint or trying to adjust it with their length of service as well. So, financially, the impact could, could vary a lot on what we determine as that base number. Right now, I'm just factoring in what the twenty sixteen face contract, you know, our union negotiated the absolute minimum salary for a full-time position, and that's what I input in for this comparison from this.
So, how does our step system work then? So, these are your grades, so how do we, you said you go seven steps?
Yep, seven steps.
So, how do you climb a step then versus a grade?
Anvers.
So, it's by years of service, this is where your steps come into?
So, then grade would be based on your position.
Right.
So, if you.
So, one through seven is seven years here at top A, is that how it rides, one, one step a year?
In my previous city, we did step A and B was a six-month, you know, probation period, and then we got a fifty cent bump. For, you know, they didn't have a percentage increase for first one, five hundred and fifty cents, but with this, that would just keep everything in the same basis, so you would be your seven.
On the state side, I think, but from five to six was two years, and from six to seven was two years.
Those are, those are other pieces that I think you could negotiate, or you could modify.
I mean, that's, that's how ours was. We were, I was an Aspian, and that's.
And you could, and it doesn't have to be seven, this is just what Springstead presented to us, we could do four, we can. I think the average, like what was presented from Springstead was, right on the kind of climate within that five, six, seven year ranges, it seems to be a little bit more common trend. Within our unions right now, what's the shortest one through steps is?
It's four steps in two years, and then the other, the longest one, I think, is seven steps in seven years, and then the other two, I believe, is six steps.
Just took them the two years back. Fifteen years to get to the top. That wanders, that scale?
Sixteen. Well, again, that was, I mean, that was one of the reasons we were talking about the compliance, is we had two groups that had sixteen years to top, and then one group was two years, and one group was seven, and it's like, well, it was, it took two years for some groups to get to the top to that.
So, with this, all of them would?
Everybody would be on the same, same timeline.
Timeline to get to, where do you need to get to?
What, seven years, everybody being seven years? I mean, all, all four of you?
Yep, unless they fit into a different, unless they land at a higher stem when you're initiating, and this, and this.
Well, these guys are taking different communities into consideration, so kind of, they've got a lot of information to piece this together, so I can say, well, my job is different, and everybody around the table can say, well, my job is different, but once again, we don't have all the data that they're throwing in.
Yep, and I'm confident that, that Springstead has done the work to, you know, the results to me are showing that, that they're, they're, they're really doing the due diligence in assigning those points correctly for those positions, because if not, we would see, you know, especially when we only have one comparable position in the period six, if it wasn't, if it didn't fit in the market, well, it would fall way above, oh. So, I, I'm confident in their, in their research and their assignment of those points for those positions, that they're as accurate as they, they can be with everything that they did as far as completing that study.
Now, this is based, you're using the, the salary survey?
Yes.
And when you're talking here about the, the overall positions, I'm assuming that the cities that you use in this sense are not oversigned?
Yep, they're.
So, we don't have?
There's no less than seven thousand population, no more than fifteen thousand population, and there are a few positions that do have some county comparables, where the county population's fell within those, but they're, they're limited, they're, you know, they're not, and they probably compare. Added sheriff to police chief, you know, sheriff wasn't included because if he's, the sheriff of a fifteen thousand population county is gonna be much different in scope of work than what our police chief is gonna be. They might have one, five employees, and they're a lot good position, and, you know, so salary rises.
Yeah, kind of like a chief for Little Falls would be different.
Yeah. Yeah. So, there's no compare, and then no city was included that fell within the seven county control area. Because there, there, even if the population's equal, the cost of living there is so much different for, for what they have versus what, what we have in Central Minnesota. If I, if I had the opportunity and I had enough comparables, cities of equal size, I would only include Central Minnesota, just for the cost of living, but otherwise, there isn't enough, so maybe fuse with every, everybody else in the L C. So, I just wanna point out too, with the, the grade scale, where those, where those points fall align, or, I guess, all in line and where the grade breaks are, they do vary a little bit as you climb, climb the scale, you know, one, grade one is obviously, it's way up, it's zero to one forty-one, and one's, and grade two is one. It's zero to one forty-one and one's, and grade two is one forty-two to one sixty. So it doesn't stay at twenty. It does, um, get a little bit bigger once you get up to grade six. Six and seven, you know, and then it ends up being about a forty point difference when you get closer to the top. And part of that, the reason for doing that is that as those, you know, I guess, positions get, as the, as the level of those positions get higher, the points assignments kind of vary quite, quite dramatically. Uh, so you need that range to kind of get the positions to fit within their own grades. And the, every, every employee was offered an opportunity to ask, you know, get a reclassification of the points if they felt that the point assignment that they were given from what we presented to page three. Uh, those were one of them. Two of them did, took, took that opportunity. I was reviewed from their inputs, department head input, my input and Springstead ultimately analyzed all of its inputs and made their decision to decide on not to make any changes for themselves.
So where do we look from here?
So the first and foremost thing would be just if you would, uh, if you have any changes to make to the pay sk, uh, the point scales, um, this would be the time to make some.
I like that for compliance. So that's what we're looking for.
Now, the establishment of these pay equity points will take care of the current situation.
We would, we maintain our compliance and then I, I'm confident that without other manipulation of the points, we would stay within compliance moving forward.
But the number three on the agenda then, would be sort of future, uh, future.
Yep, these, yep, this is for the next steps beyond the assignment of points. There would be more to these, and I want to bring those to your attention so that you can dwell on them in your decision.
So then what do we do with like the golf course superintendent and the assistant?
They, they did include in this year's survey, positions that they call a facility manager. So I think ice skating room managers and other things. So there may be some comparables out there in state in future years. But this was the first year that I saw anywhere where you can even, um, include that, uh, so you can get those golf courses. Otherwise, um, I think it's just requiring to other municipal golf courses, um, to obviously make available or, um, maybe draw some comparisons within their own positions or maybe a position like, you know, department and assistant golf course superintendent so the outside work can align a little bit more closely.
But you can still approve the points as they're listed on here.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because current, current grade is six and if those grades is ten?
Right, but that's because of the change in the grades. Remember, we're going from ten steps to eight or two.
Right.
So I mean, then those middle ones are going to change quite a bit because there's, there's more steps.
So how, how does that follow, how does that follow with the current wages out there?
Um, well, and actually, if you, if you work, so that golf course superintendent was in a grade ten position. Um, if you look at grade ten on the, on the page two, at current, at current wage, it's fifty-seven. Um, because that's where it's right now and he's at the base for twenty-sixteen. Uh, he would fall within the market right now for minimum maximum.
So he's at fifty-seven for a.
Yeah, but, yeah.
That's why I was just kind of curious if there's.
And he would, you know, for example, with that, you know, the six percent, the three percent, six percent movement, um, his minimum for that future pay schedule would be fifty-eight, so he would, he would be one of those that would, you'd either bump up right away or, um, because you'd be falling a little or you'd be showing a little.
Any questions for John?
Just looking at some of these grades are going to take a jump pretty much how much it's going to cost us for next year. Get these all.
And, yeah.
Because there are some a little at, like you said, ten percent one way or, or the other. But I suppose you don't worry about that till next year.
Well, the thing we don't know is, you know, I'm not going to off the top of my head. I mean, if you look at the minimums, employee E X, where does he fall? He might already qualify to be step four.
Well, look at the, you know, the time people got in here, how many of them are under seven years? You know what I mean? So most of them are going to be at the max if that's where they go.
Potentially.
Right.
And, and so, and that, and that is something that I haven't brought in to the comparison because the minimum maximums can move. It's dependent upon what you ultimately would decide with the pay schedule. So if there's some concerns in, in order those aligned, then that's how you, we, we kind of test the numbers in the pay schedule. You know, that it's that three percent, six percent number or the base, very base salary number that can kind of drive that, that where you're ultimately going to drop.
But obviously, for auto compliance, this gets us into compliance and keeps us in there.
There were any complaints.
Right.
I don't want to say that, but.
Right, but if we're in compliance that, and this keeps us in compliance, we can't be jumping too much. We'd be way out of whack again on the other.
I, I like this screen line you got to stay. It's almost a different margin use, one margin use that top base scale, all four years of the next ones, so.
And if we adopt this, the unions ain't got much to say. They have to go along with this or we got issues there on the backside too when it comes time to negotiation to get up to swallow this one.
I think that they would pretty much be stuck with what you'd be giving them and adopt, you know, adopting into that pay schedule. I, I don't really think they have a whole lot of authority to say it. If you're, if you're saying this is the base points that we're adopting and everybody's going to be on the same pay schedule, I don't think that's where they're going to land. Uh, I'd want to involve them in the discussion as it's happening so that we're not missing something in case.
So they're basically not aware of this yet?
No, they're aware.
They're aware.
Well, they're not, not to the pay schedule of this market valuation that I just did. Because that, that was just released and this is just my own internal analysis.
So what was their, what were their feelings about going to this point group one thing?
For the umbrella.
Overall, everybody together under one umbrella, what were their feelings about? How are they meant to be supposed to stay?
When we met, when we met with all of the employees, they were, I, I think there was comfort in the assignment of the points and that they understood moving to this larger grade, um, a larger amount of grades, that there was that, that there wasn't a huge negative impact, you know, in terms of, of pay. Their next questions were, well, what is the market comparisons? And was there a market study done? And there wasn't because it wasn't requested. Um, and I'm doing an internal look at it now because I have very recent data to work with. Um, so that I can make sure that I'm comfortable with, okay, yeah, this pay schedule, this assignment of points is going to work. If it was, if the market data said, oh, we're way up, we're, we're at hundred twenty, hundred twenty-five percent of what the market is, well, then that isn't going to work. I mean, that we're going to have to modify the pay schedule in a, in a grand way. We're, we're way short in eighty, eighty-five percent. Well, then obviously we're not, it's those, those step increases and grade increases aren't going to work or the assignment of the points don't really match up to what the market says that position, position values add, so.
Okay, but I, I understood this correct. This is just their, their basic assignment. It doesn't include their insurance package or.
No, because those are the same right now. So we don't have to draw a different, we don't have to compare differently between different unions because they're the same. So everybody's the same, so it doesn't have an impact, um, in changing that analysis.
That's something to bargain, you know, as far as their benefits, that doesn't take anything into context here.
No.
So this, wait, this, this is all beyond us here.
And that's, and that's something I'm not taking, wouldn't take away from.
Right.
Ability to negotiate. I want to keep everybody with the same healthcare options.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that, that are going to pick, you know, we're not going to offer one set of plans for the police, one set of plans for the waste operators, you know, we're not going to change that. Everybody's going to get the same plan options.
When they put this together, they don't take into consideration like some communities might have a better benefit package.
Yeah, no, that's not, you know, that's not their, as long as everybody's the same, then you can take that out of the equation when you're concerned with pay equity.
If you get more benefits, maybe take the less in the wage.
I like that.
We used to get, uh, before apples on, there was a time we did have cameras. That was given up and we get it back.
They doubled their pay and got rid of health insurance.
That wasn't a very good bargain though.
If it's health insurance, I wouldn't be afraid to cut her pay, cut her pay out.
I suppose most of the council have got insurance to where they work, I would guess.
That's why, I think that's why they.
Or if they're sixty-six, they're on Medicare.
Yeah, you're not going to have a lot of cities in the state where council members is full-time, like official. Full-time something else, very, very hard time, city official.
Any other questions for John?
I don't know.
Concerns?
I like this. It looks good.
Well, I'd like to explore the, the steps. I mean, being a private sector person, the fact that somebody's at the top of the pay scale in seven years is completely foreign to me. Seven, seven years and they're hitting their stride in accomplishing their duties.
So what did you say? There's a lot of them are five and six and seven? Yeah, I mean, but even within our own, we're at four and seven.
Two years, four steps and two years.
Yes.
Like we have some of our employees at two years or at the top of the scale.
So you get anniversary, you get calendar anniversary and what?
They, they, they get one at six months, um, one at one year, one at two years.
Are there longevity incentives after six, seven?
You get more cost of living.
You get your cost of living.
Both P and S are all looking at the wages. You're good jobs.
Right.
But I, my, my ideal, idealistic scenario is that you get, you hire employees and hope that if they're hired at grade one or two to three, that they can hopefully grow within your organization and find the means to get hired into grade six, seven, eights. And work their way up to get hired into the ten or one-twelve. And that's how you grow within a pay schedule. You, you build your working experience such that you can move up in those job classifications. Granted, in local government work, people have a lot of long stays in, in single positions and you go in something for, for a very long time. Longevity is something that could be negotiated in the future. I'm not giving that, take that away from them. But certainly in terms of making sure that we can meet pay equity and do so carrying on in the future, this is by far the best way to try to deter that. It's the parasystem.
Most of them set up seven years.
And there could be nine.
Well, you must be of all in the upgrade.
Yeah.
Well, if somebody was in a grade five, say, and they were up at the top.
Yeah.
And they took a job at the grade six, do they start out from whatever step? You know, say they were making twenty-five dollars an hour at the top of grade five. Is that where they'd start out in that step in six, where, just above the twenty-five or?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking of that earlier today too and I wanted to look in. And if you actually, with the seven step schedule or any of, any of them, with that percentage, the percentage change between step and grade, they actually would have to move into the grade, uh, step back down a grade and then for them, that would be the first one where they would make more money than they would be at the top of the previous. So incentive isn't very good for moving from one, one grade. It's a lot better for moving five.
Yeah, right.
And since you're twenty, there's a little bit more movement for us.
So how does that work if you're at grade five and you go to grade six and you're at your seven year at grade five and you started seven year at grade six?
Probably, they would negotiate in any of the contracts is that if anybody takes a promotion, then you get moved into the next step grade up. That's no less.
And money-wise, you.
That's how.
That's how it was, is.
And that's how it's, and that's how it's been.
But one step, one grade isn't going to change. You're probably at, at a six and six is making the same as what a seven is in a five. So I mean, you're only moving, eventually, however long you have to be in there, your next step will be the same. You'll be at the top of the scale as a step. I mean, it isn't, like you say, if you're going to move up to five or six, then you've got more.
Yeah.
Like, here you go from, you know, just grade eight, top A is sixty-two. And then grade nine, you start at bottom, you're fifty-five. So top A is sixty-five.
And you need to move to, and this happens all the way throughout.
It's like pretty much three steps, degree equal from top to bottom.
Grade eight, seven, sixty-two, one-twelve, uh, and then grade nine, five, sixty-two, fifty-nine. So grade six is sixty-three, nine-hundred, so that's the first, first, and that's going to be the same everywhere along. Go by same.
Is it step yearly? Is that usually how it is?
Yes.
I mean, you mentioned first six months.
Some have been, yeah, some can negotiate into six months, some can be a year, but I would push it for this to be a year. So, and, you know, for example, grade eight positions, top of the schedule, you need to move into the grade twelve position, bottom of the schedule, where you, that's the first one that's higher at very start. But when you look at the positions, I mean, yes, people do move in, in internally. They move slight, there's, there is opportunities for the slight grades, but really a long-term growth for employees may be moving multiple grades, not a single grade.
And again, that's not even different than what we have right now. It's, you know, if they're within the union, you can take a promotion to a higher classification. The same thing where some of them move, they actually move step, step. So if you're at the top, go to the top. Um, and some are at, um, you know, where you first realize a four percent increase in pay. So, you know, very, but you still have that same kind of structure.
But some you can't go to another grade. I mean, you're, if you're a heavy equipment operator, you, it's hard to go to another grade because what grade are you going to go to? You can't be a police chief or you can't be a whatever. I mean, you're pretty, pretty well stuck in whatever grade you are.
Position.
Right.
Ultimately, you have the education, the work reference to engineering from beyond.
And we've had some, some, um, you know, equipment operators, heavy equipment operators go to water tanks. And they've gotten their lessons in water.
We had one out there get that, went back to school, he did, he would work and then he went back to school and then he could move up. And that was the only way he could move up to another grade because heavy equipment operator don't fall under too many of these.
Yeah. Well, that's.
Otherwise, I think it's, it's a pretty good deal.
Any other concerns?
Get looked at again by statute?
Um, for our recording purposes, we were going to turn in in twenty eighteen for pay equity. But like, like I said before, it do, they do state. Um, for our recording purposes, we're going to turn in in twenty eighteen for pay equity, but like, like I said before, it, you do, they do state that you would need to maintain compliance even if you're not reporting. If there was ever, if we're ever drawn any question with our pay equity compliance, they would do the review, have us do the review. We call not, in a non-reporting, so the same consequences could be, could be fines, um, a lot of communities would choose just to up those, um, lower positions if it's, you know, if there's some female downline class and they're underpaid, they're automatically bumped up until they get compliance. My previous community had to do that, and then they kind of, if you're in union contracts, they can control everything up because then also one union sees that they got five percent increase and then they walk that.
We've seen that where certain unions are holding back to see what the other one got and before you, before you come talk to us and. You did this for them, you better do it for us.
And too.
So we're going to action, you mean, from us?
Adoption of the, the points for the jobs? I guess the job pay changes.
You want a motion here?
Anybody who's willing.
I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
A motion by Congressman Bushak, second by Congressman Hansen for approval of points and job titles. Any further discussion?
I'll be abstaining.
Bring it on, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side. Motion carries, the mayor is open to abstaining.
So I, and I talked about a lot of these other discussion, discussion points already, so, um, I think what I would really like for you guys to consider, um, as we, we're probably going to be looking at end of June to having a meeting with, uh, meeting with the union brass and then the stewards or the designated officials, to start this conversation about the pay schedule as well. The number of steps, the total number of grades and the percentage increase between the steps in between those grades are going to drive a lot of the factors for where those minimum maximums are going to end up. I was just presenting the recommendations from Springstead in terms of, um, where there are three percent between steps, six percent between grades, seven step schedule and the twenty grade, um, twenty grades totally, where that, how that results and for how it compares with the, with the, and you could always modify that. You know, I'm happy and I have it built and means that we could see real time what that impact is going to be. Because if we start saying, well, let's look at six per, or let's look at four percent, five percent, two percent, seven percent or something like that, we can, we could really tell, justify where those minimums are. I think that's kind of what, if you have some concerns about what those totals or where those endpoints are, starting endpoints are, that's what I think we could try to drive to find, to find, fine tune that balance.
We can play with them and state, still standard of life.
Yep, because once you, once you establish that it's going to be consistent all the way, it should, it should keep you within compliance. I mean, as long as the assignment of points are correct, which I feel they are, they're justified and that's what's going to improve. As long as they, they have limits, where you have a linear pathway of, of wages, they're insane compliance. Because as long as the points aren't messed with, as long as the points are accurate to what their job titles are and they fit within the right grade, they're going to, their pay is going to equate to that, so.
A lot of them are going to be at the top of their grade, but not.
When they, when they're getting, getting assigned into the, into the schedule, they're likely going to fall with the.
A lot of linear, they, they're great, they'll be some senior. So when do we go about adopting the steps or?
Probably in June.
Had you been to?
Because likely, I, I, their idea would be, um, I'd like to have us wrapping up union negotiations in August, so that we know, um, wage wise, what we're going to be moving into in September for the certified or preliminary level. I, I've tried to work with that September deadline, um, you know, and knowing like the, in the worst case scenario, it's going to be the property.
We can still tweak the percentage between the steps and the.
Yep.
Grades.
I mean, once it's, once it's set, you want to keep it, keep it there, keep it consistent so that we know in a bargain, for a bargaining.
Where we would be adopted to, for a beginning.
Yeah.
That's always. This is a, we get union negotiations taking parent before, and that's a good thing because in the past, we set what we had for the budget, and then all of a sudden they looked at, okay, their budget is this, so that's what we're going for.
We'll take that.
And sometimes it's a little higher than what they probably would have thought.
Anything else?
That was really all I wanted to talk to you about this evening.
Well, let's not talk about.
Six twenty-four, we'll adjourned.
Hello, yeah, kind of getting more, okay? Light Hanson. I'm just wondering, uh, you had raised your concerns about how you, right, exactly, uh, how within the seven years, um, kind of people reach the top of their pay scale. Did you think that, um, there was something to be that, uh, to actually get, establish those down, those years or is that?
It was probably.
No, that's going to be a topic of conversation coming up, we have to, all, all can get started, we're going to establish a point value for each step.
Probably still have to talk to, to find out, yeah, some stuff like that.
Do you think the, uh, solutions move to a percentage?
It's the same with that.
Steps or.
For, for me, it'd be a longer, longer time, seven steps is longer time, I think if somebody is, you know, a top performer in less than ten years.
And, uh, can I just get your name again?
Light Hanson. No, they're workers, something like, yeah, because they've had no.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Yep, and that's what I, and then when I was doing the salary, when I was doing the salary studies, you know, that's what I found was in janitor, there was people that were like building maintenance supervisor. I'm like, well, that can't, I mean, you're not a janitor, if you're supervisor, you know.
No.
The baseline.
Hi, Robin.
Oh, uh, hello. Can I get your guys' names again, just written down, just add.